I'll call the meeting of March 6, 2019 to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilman DeCecio? Councilwoman Guevara?
Here.
Councilwoman Mendoza? Councilman Nowakowski? Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring? Mayor Williams?
Here. Mr. Barajas, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be today's interpreter and I'm going to be making a brief announcement in Spanish for Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como intérprete de esta tarde. Si acaso alguien necesitará el servicio de un intérprete de español, podrán pasar hacia atrás con el señor Nick, personal de la ciudad, para poder recoger los audífonos para escuchar la interpretación en español. Gracias.
Thank you. Next is citizen comments. Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, would you like to come down, please? Each speaker gets three minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow council members, my name is Eddie Cook. I'm the Vice Mayor in the town of Gilbert. Greetings from Gilbert. I wanted to share with you a journey that I started last year with Team Gilbert. Last year, actually two years ago, I attended a leadership conference and in this leadership conference, there was a session that intrigued me. And that session was titled Civility in the Workplace, which got my attention. So I attended the session and the premise of the session was that, does your organization or your company have a policy on civility? And I work for a large corporation and I said, you know, we have a lot of, you know, statements about values and respect, but we don't have a policy on civility. So I shared with my council mayor that I would like to develop such a policy for Team Gilbert. So the council allowed me to start a subcommittee, which we did last year. It took us 10 months to come up with this resolution and I would like to share this resolution to your team. And I'm going to take this on a road trip and share with the 91 cities and towns in We live in a world where hyper-partisanship seems to be the normal, where bipartisanship or even, as I would like to say, non-partisanship dialogue should be the normal. And the silent majority that we represent would like to have more civility in our state and in our country. And we are a body that is building community and not a body of dividing community. So I'm here to encourage Team Phoenix to come up with its own version of civility so that us local leaders in the state of Arizona can speak on behalf of our silent majority, where kindness, generosity, and service is the normal that we would like. With that, Mayor, thank you very much. I will continue my journey throughout the state of Arizona. I don't know how long it will take me, but I am called to do this. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much and have a safe journey. Peggy Neely? Follow, Michael Johnson follows Peggy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks for letting me speak today. And I just want to take a minute to go over some dates of things that have happened with the light rail over a period of time. Back in April of 2005, the city of Phoenix and the city of Glendale agreed to join, to a joint study proposing light rail transit route. And then in October of 2017, Glendale City Council voted not to move forward with the Glendale segment of the route determining that the cost was way too high. And Glendale decided to abandon that because of the cost. The city of Phoenix is still post to spend an estimated $700 million of taxpayers' money, the equivalent of $120 million per mile of light rail tracks, to develop a line that is fragmented and will terminate abruptly at 43rd Avenue and Camelback. Whereas in October of 2018, the council prudently decided to defer a portion of the light rail that was going to Paradise Valley Mall. The consequences of the city council's inaction to date is costing all city taxpayers at risk for watching the millions of dollars that are squandered on the train to nowhere. So I'm here and I'm asking you pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 22 of the Phoenix City Charter, I, Peggy Neely, a citizen and resident of the city of Phoenix, hereby petition the city council to consider and enact within 15 days a resolution ordinance or measure that terminates or indefinitely suspends any development or construction of the expenditure of public funds in connection with the light rail transit route along Camelback at any point between 19th and 43rd. We really believe with the ballot issue that's coming on, that it's just confusing to the voters and we've been talking about this a long time. And I want to commend the mayor for all she's done, but I think it's time for us to have another vote and I appreciate you looking into it. Have a copy for all of you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Michael?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's almost like old times. I could just speak behind my former colleague, Ms. Neely.
I know.
I just wanted to take the opportunity.
You're too close together.
Yes. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity just to, I had the opportunity to work and support the businesses along Camelback Road with Cactus Jack Auto Dealership and Bill Luke Chrysler Dodge Dealership there and had the opportunity to go to numerous meetings with Grand Canyon Community College, or Grand Canyon Community, Grand Canyon College, to talk about this light rail going down Camelback Road, as well as attend some meetings in Glendale. And now that Glendale has decided to act out of the connection that was going to connect on 43rd Avenue, I think that it would be only fair to put this on the agenda. So I am supportive of light rail in other portions where it's needed. However, this portion that's going to go down Camelback Road is going to be destructive to the businesses. It's not something that the college came out and really came out in support of. They are really an enclosed campus, so they're not trying to build a campus that would be conducive to what the light rail would be. So the businesses, the residents there, the majority of them have been against it, but we would lose a huge amount of tax revenue from all the dealerships as well as the store that's there, right there on the corner, which we would have to build a bridge. Their costs would be enormous in order to do that light rail down there just for that path. So I just wanted to be in support of the dealerships, in support of QuickTrip, who, by the way, QuickTrip just expanded their facility there and they had, came in and got the permit from the city and started all of their work to do their permitting and never had any information from the city that they were going to be doing light rail, bringing over a bridge, cutting off the access to their business. So I'm supportive of light rail. However, I am supportive of the businesses along Camelback Road to not do that path there, especially since Glendale has acted out and I would hope that the council would put it on the agenda to take that portion off. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Haskins?
Hello. My name is Joshua Haskins. I am an Arizona resident, small business owner. I am a Christian, a father of six children, and an abolitionist. Thank you for taking the time to be here and hear me speak today. I stand before you today to beg and plead with you to protect the citizens of Arizona that are being murdered every single day while under your authority and protection. You have sworn an oath to uphold justice, so today I beg you to do just that. I will not rattle off all the biological evidence and proof that a child in the womb is fully human, valuable, and worthy of dignity and respect because you already know the truth. At the point of conception, a zygote is created, a unique and distinct human organism that is fully human and fully alive. The truth is obvious and evident to every one of you here today. It is only when you suppress the truth and deny the value of a child made in the image of God that such an egregious and barbaric act like abortion continues to this day. This is a stain on our nation that will radiate throughout history. We look back now at the wickedness of slavery and oftentimes people ask, how could they have let slavery happen? How could people have devalued another people group to the point of treating them like animals, robbing them of their God-given rights, stealing away their dignity? We now look back disgusted that our nation and political leaders could have allowed such a human's rights violation. Well, 50 years from now, 100 years from now, people will look back disgusted at the fact that the citizens of this nation murdered their children. 70 million of our nation's children have been mass murdered and you are allowing it to continue. In Arizona alone, about 40 babies are murdered each day. If you don't do everything in your power to stop it, then we don't want you representing us. You can step down and leave. Let someone who is bold and brave and willing to fight for life take your place. Political office is not for those who are weak and cowardly. Every single one of you that holds your position has a duty to be obedient to God and his law. It is your responsibility to act on the behalf of and defend those you govern over. If you do not act now and do everything in your power to end the murder of innocent children in the state of Arizona, then you are an accomplice. You are guilty and you have the blood of all those children on your hands, regardless if you are the doctor doing the abortion and ripping the baby limb from limb, the mother paying an assassin to murder her child, or the politician who sits idly by and does nothing. Nothing to protect those children. The blood of those innocent babies is on your hands and the wrath of God abides on you. The citizens of this nation are rising up all over and demanding an end to the slaughter of innocent babies. I am not part of the pro-life movement that keeps abortion legal and only seeks to regulate it. I am an abolitionist and it must end now. Do your duty. Honor God. Obey his law. Protect our citizens. Enforce Arizona Statute 13-3603 and end abortion now. For more information, you can visit endabortionnow.com. To God be all the glory today and forever.
Thank you. Michael Hendrickson?
Honorable city council members, my name is Michael Hendrickson. I'm a faithful believer in Jesus Christ and a member of Apologia Church here in the valley. I'm a proud husband, father, and military veteran. All my life, I've had respect for our beautiful country. I respect the U.S. Constitution, the president, the lawmakers, the military, the police, and everything in between. You see that the Bible states that everyone placed in authority has been placed there by God and this includes every one of you sitting on the council today. I, like Josh, here, am here to plead with each one of you to stand up for our neighbors who cannot stand up for themselves. It pains me to know that since 1901, Arizona has had a law on the books prohibiting abortion, yet 40 beautiful children are killed each day in our own abortion clinics. I've listened to both sides of the arguments and found that those who call themselves pro-choice are really asking for a life free of consequences. Each and every one of us today face consequences, both good and bad, for the choices that we make. A possible consequence of having sex is the conception of a child. There is a choice, ladies and gentlemen. The choice is to partake in the sexual act or not to partake. The woman is free to choose what she wants to do with her body regarding this choice. If you are not ready to have a child, perhaps you should not do the act in which you can get pregnant. We have all heard the many excuses that pro-choice advocates like to use. Well, I'm not financially prepared to take care of a child. I'm not ready. Well, I'm here to say that this is rubbish. My family was very poor when I was younger. My dad worked so hard for us and times were tough. But was that an excuse to murder me or my sisters? No. What if the child is supposed to have a health condition and won't be able to live outside the womb? Again, it's rubbish. In my life personally, I know of four children who were diagnosed with a harmful disease or condition and the parents were encouraged by their doctor to have an abortion. I'm happy to say that those parents disregarded their doctor's advice and had the children. And each and every one of these children are perfectly fine and living happy lives today. My point in sharing these excuses are that they aren't the real reason why pro-choice movement wants free access to abortion. They love murder and we will not stand for it. God says that you will have the blood on your hands if you don't do something about it. Please uphold the current Arizona revised statute 133603 and end abortion now. I promise you that we will stand by you if you uphold the law, but if you don't, I promise you that we will oppose you and let the Arizona residents know. Thank you for your time.
We have time for one more card. Marcus Pittman. And anyone who has submitted cards, we will make time at the end of the meeting for further citizen's comments.
My name is Marcus Pittman. I am a member of Apologia Church and I am sick of coming here every single week. We come here every time there's a city council meeting and we talk to you guys about the same exact subject, abortion. And we don't hear a single thing back from any one of you, especially Jim, who has the endorsement of Arizona Right to Life and the Center for Arizona Policy. He hasn't contacted our church one time. Our church has over 150,000 YouTube subscribers. We have several thousand Facebook likes. And End Abortion Now works with 350 churches all over the country. We have a huge following, but yet we can't get a single city council member to come together with us and work with us on a bill to uphold 13-3603 here in Arizona. Not once. Now, I watched, Jim, I watched your video, whoops. I watched your video of you being sworn into council and one of the things you say is that you are to protect the citizens of Arizona from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I'd like to ask you, Jim, at what point, at what point is someone declared a domestic enemy? At what point? Is there a taxation rate the federal government could set that you would say, that point, I would protect our citizens and I would defy the federal government? Is there an act the federal government could do? Could they take away our guns at that point? Would you say, hey, I'm going to defy the federal government? In 1850s, there was a Fugitive Slave Act and Wisconsin defied the federal government and said, we will not return slaves back to their owners. And yet, there's been 70 million children killed in our nation and yet no council member I have seen, and through End Abortion Now, there are several all over the country, no council member I have seen yet has said, we will work to defy the federal government and end abortion, no matter what the Supreme Court says, no matter what federal law says, we will protect the enemies, both foreign and especially the domestic ones that decide to destroy our nation. So I'm begging all of you guys to reach out to us. Let's work, let's not regulate abortion clinics to make sure that they're ADA compliant. If somebody was trying to make rape legal and they created rape centers, it would be foolish, it'd be foolish to say, we need to make ADA compliant rape centers. No, we need to shut them down. And that's what I'm asking you guys to do, especially the ones that have the endorsement of the pro-life groups, to actually end abortion and defy the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. We will have the clerk read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances numbered G6561 through 6568, S45413 through 45435, and Resolution 21722.
Thank you. I believe there are no minutes for today. Boards and commissions, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Mayor's Boards and Commissions.
And City Council?
And the City Council Boards and Commissions. Sorry.
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, I forgot. Councilwoman Pastor is on the phone, so everyone.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. All right. I'm here to be sworn in. Raise your hand, right hand. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the census state.
According to the best of my ability, so help me.
According to the best of my ability, so help me.
Thank you all. You are now official and we'd like to have you walk up and, so the council can greet you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I believe that brings us to liquor licenses.
Move to approve items 2 through 21.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Ready for the omnibus? Move to approve items 22 through 61, except items 27, 55, 58, and 59. Item 33 will be continued to April 3, 2019. Item 29 has been withdrawn. Item 48 is as corrected and item 49 is continued through March 20. And I believe item 59 will be corrected when we do it separately.
Okay.
Not in this motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Pardon me?
Just a quick comment.
Mm-hmm.
Pardon me? For those of you that are here on the hospice case, I see Paul Gilbert here. Paul, I just want to tell you, you did amazing work on that. It's basically an act of God, what you've done. You've been able to get everybody involved, but you've also done something very human and very nice for our city. This, I'm going to have a hospice entity in my district right off of 44th Street, but Paul Gilbert, others have been involved, the neighborhood leaders, I mean, they literally had all the neighborhood leaders come out and support the case, which could have been controversial. You've just done an amazing job. And for those that are, have ever used hospice, it is an amazing organization. It's one that is incredible, the amount of compassion that it provides families in particular is something that most of us, you know, would hope we wouldn't have to deal with, but we do, just because that's what we do. There are angels that work there. I mean, they are true angels that work there. For some of us who've had, family members have had to go through that. It's a very emotional experience and the kindness that's shown is amazing. I'm glad this is coming in my district. I'm glad that you've done all the work that you've done. The amount of work that you've put into this thing is just spectacular. And for some of you from hospice, thank you for everything that you do. I don't think you get enough thank-yous and people don't realize all the work that you do until you go into a hospice center and you see how much work that they provide. So thank you for everything that you do. Paul, I mean, I don't know how you got Paul, but you did. You know, he gets paid by the word. I don't know if you know that. He's not paid by the hour, he's paid by the word. But he is really good at what he does and I just want to thank you for all that you've done and the work that you're going to be doing from that center. And then also, item 33, I believe, is being continued? Thanks. That's it. I'm fully supportive.
Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Item 27, I have.
I'm going to move items 27, out of respect for your potential conflict.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Move to approve item 55?
Second.
Second.
Wally Graham, did you want to speak on this item? You have two minutes, Wally.
It's for item 55, Hospice of the Valley. Sal said most of what, am I called to speak now? Yeah, I'd just like to say my own thanks to the Hospice of the Valley team. I'm the president of the Arcadia Osborne Neighborhood Association and the reason I wanted to speak today is that this was a very, very unusual experience for both the zoning attorney, Mr. Gilbert, for myself and members of my association, and for the management of the HOV. The process worked as it should work and that is, we listened to one another, we exchanged ideas, we didn't always agree, but we found ways to develop what I think will be a real asset to our community. And I appreciate what Sal said. This is really something that makes a difference for a community. I believe that we have to find more ways for zoning attorneys and neighborhood associations. We're not the enemy. We should be friends and we should be able to develop the kind of work that we did with the Hospice of the Valley team. So I thank Paul and Diana and Debbie and their whole team for what they did to help us to see how we can work together to get things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
I have a comment. It's the first time Paul didn't stand up to speak, so it's a yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Eight zero. Right? Okay, item.
Move to approve item 58?
Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
I'd like to make a comment real quick.
Can we hold roll call so the councilwoman can make her comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. Is the applicant here?
Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza, yes. Mr. Hugh Mantle is here on behalf of the applicant.
Awesome. One of the things that I wanted to ask is if they're willing to add more trees to the frontage of the development. Part of our tree and shade master plan is to add more trees in areas of our districts that don't have much. Oh, he doesn't have to. No, no, it's fine. I didn't see that. Sorry.
You can just shout your answer.
So again, part of the tree and shade master plan is to add more trees into areas that we don't have much shade, so I wanted to know if it was okay, if you're willing to add more. Perfect, thank you. And with that, I approve, I, oh, yes, yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Eight zero. 59?
So 59 is going to be as corrected? I think it's in.
Is that the one that's?
Sal's district. I want to have a presentation.
Yeah, I can put something out there if you'd like, Mayor, just so that we can discuss the motion. Or would you rather hear testimony? It's your call.
I'll open the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing. There you go.
And did you want to make comments? And then I will have staff make a quick presentation.
Yeah, it's whatever you'd like to do. I could put a motion out real quick if you'd like to do that. That way it's on there. Motion to approve per planning commission recommendation with a modification stipulation number seven to read, there shall be a minimum of a 60-foot setback from the south end of the property. the property line for the R-35 rezoning area and adopt the related ordinance. This clarifies stipulation seven to reflect what the Planning Commission intended as part of their recommendation approval. It passed Planning Commission unanimously, I believe it passed the Village 13 to 2. And just wanted to put that on the record first. Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to explain the case?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We'll have you give us information.
Certainly, Mayor, members of council, this rezoning request is from RE-35 Large Lot Residential to R-118 and RE-35 Residential, it's approximately 12-acre site for a single-family residential development. Staff does recommend approval per stipulations. This aerial shows the two subject areas. The red area is the R-118 zoning district boundary, the yellow is the RE-35 area. This is the area that would allow for one potential home to be built here where the 60-foot stipulation that was just clarified by Councilman DeCiccio, it'd be 60 feet from this property line to where the house would be built back here. That was the intent of the Planning Commission when they added that stipulation. The background of this case is that this particular subdivision, when it came in here, was developed under the RE-35 zoning district and they added additional open space to get a density bonus. That open space was developed as a tennis court and natural area over here. The HOA has since sold off that open space. And this request is to rezone it so the R-118 will allow this subdivision to be in conformance with the zoning requirements and allow just one home to be built on this almost one-acre parcel right here. This just shows those two areas, the surrounding zoning is RE-35 on this area, RE-24 over here by way of reference. This is the Arizona Canal and this is the city's water treatment plant for up here to the north. This is just their proposed site plan, there's a tennis court that is there today as part of the open space that will remain. And here's where their building area is approximately 60 feet back from that front property line along the street edge there. With that, staff does recommend approval per the stipulation language that Councilman DeCiccio read into the record just a minute ago. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions right now? Hearing none, we will go to the cards. Ray Brennan is the applicant, I believe, would you like to speak?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Brennan Ray, 702 East Osborne, here on behalf of the applicant, Rocky Acres 6204 LLC, which is Mr. Leslie Williams. As, we're certainly thankful for staff's presentation and agree with their recommendation. Just to be brief, certainly cognizant of the time, the net effect of this case is to build one home on one and a half acres for Mr. Williams and his family to live in. He has been in this process for two and a half years and he really wants to live in it. He's certainly a Phoenix resident and has been, his family has been for a number of years. And so, at the end of the day, there are no changes that are being proposed to the existing 14-lot community that's known as 2200 East Bethany. We've worked closely with the planning department and the Bethany HOA, as I mentioned, over the course of the past two and a half years. And we're certainly grateful for the support that we've received from planning and importantly, from the neighbors of the Bethany community and the HOA. We believe that what is proposed in terms of the home is certainly compatible in terms of scale, size, and intensity with the area. It's consistent with the general plan and recorded private agreement that's been on the books since 1978. We've worked closely with planning department on the STIPS to ensure that except for one home on this one and a half acres, nothing else changes in the area. And I think that's important to note. And we're certainly appreciative of staff's recommendation for approval, the 10-2 recommendation by the Camelback East Village, and the unanimous Planning Commission recommendation for approval. And we would request this council's approval as well. I'll be brief, as Alan indicated, this is the site and it is 12 acres, but it essentially is two requests. One is to rezone a little over 10 acres, which makes up the bulk of the site outlined there in black, to R-118. And the other is to rezone the lot up there, kind of the thumb sticking up, to, from RE-35 to RE-35. Just to orient everyone with the site, this is kind of what it looks like, we did take some drone shots, this is Mr. Williams' lot, he acquired it in 2016. Again, just some other aerials, again, to orient everyone with what is around, including there is the tennis court that sits on the east side of the lot. So I think it's important, as we look at this, to kind of understand some of the history as well. The site was annexed in 1959 and at the time it was annexed, it was given zoning designation of RE-35. That's the exact same zoning designation that exists on the property today. It existed at the time in 1997 when the 2200 East Bethany community started to develop. There was no rezoning case necessary for this community to develop back in 1997. What was needed back then was some additional open space area, some additional common area in order for that, the development in 97 to achieve the density and number of lots that it did. And so they went out and acquired this roughly one and a half acres. And it's a common area and this council's seen lots of developments, it's a little bit unique in that unlike other developments, it sits outside of the community and is adjacent to the canal. And I know that there are some neighbors here and Mr. Taylor Earl, who represents the HOA, will speak more to some of the challenges and problems that that HOA has had with this kind of unique common area that's outside their community. And so, Mr. Williams acquired it and did his due diligence and one of the things that he saw was, you know, the RE-35 zoning, which if the HOA had chosen to prior to selling it to Mr. Williams, they could have built a two-story clubhouse on it that certainly would be, could be similar in size and scale and certainly intensity to, than, a lot bigger than what Mr. Williams is proposing. But one of the things that I mentioned was a private restriction. This is, and I know normally we don't get into this, but I think it's important to understand for this case, and this is a copy of that 1978 private agreement. And the area outlined in gray, which is just immediately west of the subject site, this agreement encumbers all of those properties, which is, a lot of the neighbors that have expressed concerns about having one home on this, this agreement applies to those lots that they own as well. And so that 1978 agreement's still in force today and is still binding. And what does it say? It's underlined there in red, but in case it's too far away, what this agreement expressly provides and that the owners back then consented to is one single-family dwelling unit could be built and maintained on what is now Mr. Williams' property that he acquired. And so, when the HOA acquired it, it did not eliminate this agreement. This agreement runs with the land and is binding and exists today. So, this is the site plan, the stipulations, I won't go through that too much, this is...
Need you to wrap up.
I'm, I'm, that's where I'm headed. In the end, let me sum up at the mayor's direction, and it really is about Mr. Williams wanting to build this home. We have spoken with the neighbors, there was some talk about whether or not Mr. Williams would be interested in selling it. Obviously, he's expended a considerable amount of time, expense, and energy over the course of the past two and a half years. We said, hey, if you want to buy it, we're certainly welcome to listen to offers. We have not received any offers and we're really ready to move forward so that he can build. So with that, be happy to answer any questions and would request this body's approval.
Don't believe we have any questions at this time.
Thank you.
Jay Wiggins? And do you have a person that's donated, so you can have four minutes, please?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for seeing me. My name's Jay Wiggins, I live at 6130 North 22nd Street. I live there with my wife and seven-year-old son. And we live in one of Ralph Haver's first custom homes, so that's kind of cool. We are directly south of the tennis court lot and west of the 2200 East Bethany subdivision. And I have a ton of details that I'm going to skip over because, oh, thank you, thank you. I have a ton of details that I'm going to skip over in the interest of time, but there, they include that the rezoned property has no access to water and that the, as a R-118, their common space still has shortfalls. But the bigger point is, I'm here opposing this today because I don't want a house behind me. That's, you know, my problem. It's on a small lot, it'll affect our privacy, our views, and things like that. But really, I don't like to see when bad behavior is getting rewarded. And this all started in 2016 when the HOA of 2200 East Bethany improperly sold the tennis court lot to a developer. The lot was required by the subdivision to keep its R-35 zoning compliance. But I guess the HOA saw a way to monetize it and they ignored their zoning requirements. And then they got caught. And a hard hold was placed on the subdivision, making it impossible to get permits. Now I have, now they have a self-inflicted problem, but the solution wasn't to revert the sale and get back into compliance and then go through this process. Their solution was to stay out of compliance, hire lawyers, and show up here today to ask you to reapprove, or reapprove the zoning. And what the HOA should have done is they should have done this process before they sold the property. If they had, I and the neighbors in the Rocky area, Rocky Acres area, would probably come to some kind of agreement on how they could monetize that, that space. But they sold it improperly and now we're here. It sets a terrible precedent for HOAs to monetize their open space. It sends this message, sell your open space requirement and then sort out the legal details later. In the prior two hearings, things were very procedural. The votes seemed based extensively, if not entirely, on staff recommendations. So I hope the city council members can see through the procedural nature of this rezoning application and not reward bad behavior with approval. I was born and raised in Phoenix and I love it here and I know how special our neighborhood is. And I want to state that I speak for myself, my family, but I probably also speak for the majority of the Rocky Acres residents in saying that we're committed to defending the, any disruptions to wildlife, old growth vegetation, and density that's going to impact our unique neighborhood. It's a very special place, we all have large lots, it's a unique asset to Phoenix and we're going to protect it. So, thank you very much for your time and I'm done.
Thank you. Next is Mona Beam, and also gets four minutes, time donated to her.
I have some binders to give everyone so they can look at some maps and...
Let me start it, Jay.
You ready? Maria Beam, I live at 6050 North 22nd Street. I've been there for 10 years, my husband's been there for a lot longer than that. I did a binder for you because I wanted you to be able to see a map of where we live. But I want to go back a little bit and talk about the subdivision. In the beginning, they only qualified for 11 homes because of the hillside that they have there, this was back in 1996. Then they went to 13 homes by making it a PRD. Then they went to 14 homes, adding some more acreage as they said earlier, one and a half acres was added. And so they got the density bonus and they were able to do 14 homes. Now, they're coming to you and they're going to have 15 homes. And it just keeps creeping up as the years go by. Tract E, which is what Mr. Williams purchased, was subdivided in 1966. The owner attempted to build on it and could not. It sat for 11 years, unbuildable. Then they sold it in 1984 to the McDades, who also tried to get it built, came to the city and the city said no. It sat there for another, until 1996, when the subdivision purchased it from the McDades. Now, the city allowed for, for an alternative use for this tennis court lot, it's now a tennis court lot, but it wasn't before. So they allowed an alternative use, they wouldn't allow building a home on it in the past, all these years since 1966. So, there are no problems with vagrancy, as some people will tell you. We've never had problems there, we don't have walls in our homes, we're completely open. There's never been any issues until Mr. Williams purchased the lot, left the tennis court unlocked, tore down the trees for everybody to see that it's open space, and the people walking through the canal decided to make it a home for a couple of months. They're gone, they're no longer there. So there is no issue, we've told them we can help them if they wanted to. One of the things I want to tell you, if you look at number 11, and the binder's for you to look at all the information, but if you look at tract B, which is number 11, tract B, there, Mr. Yavitz is going to come and talk to you about tract B. Tract B, I just want to tell you in advance, has a lateral going through it. And it is, part of it is actually an easement for road purposes. The other thing is, if you look at number 12, SRP has designated this area as a historic open ditch lateral. So they don't want anything happening to that area, they use it as a road, they use it as a maintenance road for the lateral, they use it as a service road and access to the turnout structure and to the canal itself. So we'll talk a little bit more about tract B and how they want to use that for their common open space. And last, I just want to say, if you allow this to happen, this is going to open the door for a lot of other neighborhoods to have developers walk in and say, oh, you're not using that open space, I'm going to buy it for you really cheap and I'm going to develop it, and then go to the city council and say, we've got problems and can we rezone this now? And it's kind of like asking for forgiveness and not for permission.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a quick question if I could. You have a list of ownership, Councilman Noakowski asked me that too, on item number two.
Yes.
Which group is that?
So there's a, there's a lot of owners within the subdivision and they each had, because the attorney requesting the application is the attorney only for Mr. Williams, they had to get the ownership authorization forms for each of the lots. And two of them are missing a signature from one of the owners. That is, lot one is missing Sarah Albana's signature. And then lot four is missing Paulina Vasquez's notarized signature. Lot six for Mrs. Marilyn Alexander, she actually did not do, they didn't do the acknowledgement correctly, so it doesn't show that she was present for her signature. And the same goes for lot seven for Ms. Tran Tree, I think that's how you say it. She signed it, but again, there's no acknowledgement from the notary that she was present when this was signed. So there's four acknowledgement forms that are improper.
But are those individuals in your neighborhood or the neighborhood where the zoning request is being done?
It's for the zoning request.
Is being done?
Yes. Yes.
Do you have any further questions?
Is that it?
Thank you.
I've left a petition with the young lady here. It's 123 minus two people that I know that rescinded their signatures. It has 19 emails and 121 signatures from the neighbors stating they're opposed to this.
Thank you. Randy Yavitz. And you two have four minutes.
Thank you. And good afternoon, councilpersons. We thank you for your service and your time. I'll try not to be boring. I represent the Rocky Acres Environmental Protection Association. It's kind of a homeowners group, but it's really an environmental group that comprises a lot of the neighborhoods in the area. We are a 501(c)(3). We're dedicated to, well, environmental issues. And I'll get to that in a couple of minutes. So, I've got three technical reasons why this can't go forward with rezoning. As a lawyer, you know I'm going to have technical reasons, right? And then I've got a policy reason. Here's the technical reasons. And you've got the notebook on number two, you've got, it hasn't been signed off on all the neighbors who are requesting rezoning in the neighborhood. Maria went through that. Number three, they haven't notified the relevant school districts about this. Now, both of these issues, the signature issue and the school district issue, was pointed out by the planning department. Some efforts were made, but they didn't do it right. And so those two prerequisites aren't met. But here's the bigger one. With RE35 zoning, you need 15% open space. With R-118, you still need 5%. Now, they're jettisoning their tract E, which is, we called it the tennis court lot. And they already sold off C and, and D. So all they have left is the lateral, basically where the lateral runs through, that's Lot B. And if you'll turn to number four in the notebook, we've drawn a map. And I'm going to show you that they do not have the 5% open space. We've talked to Mr. De Perro of the city, he agrees with us. What they did wrong in their analysis is they didn't have any setback from the Arizona Canal. They didn't have any setback to the south from Bethany Home Road. And so we have a map that was drawn. It's the last page here.
Can we put that map back up of the area?
And if you'll look at page four, on number four, Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to We've got a map that was drawn by an architect, a map drawn by an architect that shows Lot B. And it shows the different segments of setbacks. And so there's lines drawn that show the different setback requirements. And what it shows is that when you apply the appropriate setbacks on B, and B's all they have for open space, they come out 2,300 feet short. Okay, that's the technical reasons. No signatures, no school districts, not enough open space. But here's the big picture. The big picture is, 20 years ago, I was there and there was, there was a deal made. You can have increased density if you maintain this open space. And so, three years ago, the subdivision decided, well, let's take, we heard it was $300,000 for this lot, sell it. And we'll sell the open space and then we'll take care of the zoning issues later. Now imagine if this happens all over town. I have to say, the, the planning department told us, we're not policymakers, that's the city council. And you are the policymakers. So consider, is it good policy to encourage subdivisions who have open space to be ready, willing and able to take, have developers come in and say, say, you've got some open space, do you really need it? Sell it to me, I'll take care of the zoning. That's what's happening here. And it's a bad precedent. Thank you.
Thank you. Taylor Earl, you have two minutes, please.
Hi, for your record, my name is Taylor Earl. Our address is 3101 North Central Avenue. So I am here, I represent the HOA of the subdivision that has the 14 lots. So just to be clear about the, the ownership, it isn't the case that every property requires both property owners. We know that some desired to have two on there, but getting a signature for one of the property owners, we understood to be sufficient in that case. And, and so I think we're covered on, on that just fine. The other thing I wanted to be clear about is that, as they mentioned, everybody in that subdivision has authorized the rezoning to go forward. Typically, when sometimes we'll come in and as, you know, attorneys or developers who talk about, you know, common area and we talk about maybe a percentage of common area, that does make sense when there's nobody living in the subdivision. And we have to think prospectively about people coming in and what type of community do we want for these people who are potentially buying. It's a lot different when those residents are in the subdivision and have authorized the rezoning to go forward, to have a home be put on that particular common area. There have been major difficulties with that. Because of its proximity to the canal, and I know I'm limited on time, but let me just jump to one slide here. Because of the proximity to the canal, you have people that can walk up and down the canal, can access it from here, you have large trees. And I put down there, crime prevention through environmental design, which is one of the key planning principles. This is really a septet nightmare. And so that's why, over the years, it had become a real challenge to keep things off of it, to keep people off of it. And so ultimately, it really wasn't being utilized and it became a source of a lot of concern for a lot of the residents. And they were finding things on it that were inappropriate, people that clearly didn't belong there. And so, they are authorizing this to go forward. We believe that this is a much better use, that's more in line with the community, to have somebody live, it'll be safer. Maria mentioned that she hasn't had problems on her property, which I think proves the point. It's because she lives on her property and there is a resident there. And so that deters people from coming onto the property. And of course, she's not next to the canal like this property is. So we're here in support of this. We think it's better, more in line with the community to have a home there. The fact that they've been willing to stipulate the single story, to stipulate that it'll have only one lot on the property, we've stipulated to make sure that our subdivision stays at 14. I think we've, we've really addressed the key kind of concerns that exist in this case.
Thank you.
So Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, may I ask a question that maybe not as much for Taylor? But there are two issues that are going on here. One is dealing with the neighborhood as a whole, and then the other one dealing with Mr. Williams's property. Can those be bifurcated here?
I'm sorry, Councilman De Sisio, can you repeat the question?
Could they be separated?
The, the two rezoning, the RE35 and the R-118 portion? No, they, they cannot. They go together in tandem because the, the, the underlying rationale and the reason that the existing subdivision is be able, is able to be built at the density that it's at is because they have additional open space. And so, I want to address a concern that some of the residents have made, that in the vast majority of subdivisions built in the city of Phoenix, probably like 99%, you do not see this condition. What you see is the minimum required open space that they will still have to meet. They've met with staff multiple times and we believe they do still meet those requirements. What they have sold off is additional open space that they acquired and they built to earn a density bonus to build an additional, additional units in the subdivision when it was originally constructed. So the vast majority of subdivisions you see in Phoenix that, that you guys deal with do not have additional open space that was used for a density bonus provision. It is just the standard open space requirement. And so, what makes this one unique is they did acquire over and above the required, you know, common open space to get that bonus that allowed more units. And so the rezoning case is seeking to allow them to have zoning on the subdivision property that's R-118 that allows the density that's built. And that frees up the additional bonus land where the tennis court is, for that to be developed with the one single-family home.
I understand the connectivity on that, Alan, but what I'm saying is that some of the issues we're dealing with, deal with, you know, it's a significant change to a neighborhood. And I understand where the, you know, this is an incredible area, it's a beautiful area. But the, the house itself can still go forward because the zoning, I believe a lot of that was already in place anyways, the single-family. But there were concerns that we received in my office was changing everything categorically across the board. Why could one not? I still don't understand. I understand the density part, I get all that, obviously. But I do, I don't know if I totally agree that you cannot bifurcate and separate this case. I understand the connectivity, I get it.
So, Mayor, Councilman De Sisio, the, the issue is that the number of units you have shown in red, which is the portion to be rezoned to R-118, cannot legally exist without the additional piece, the thumb, as Mr. Earl, Mr. Brennan have called it, in being a part of that subdivision. Because that's what allows them the density bonus to have that number of units. So you have to rezon the red portion to the R-118 to allow the number of dwelling units that are constructed within that subdivision. And that's why they can't be separated, to allow the RE35 piece to go forward and build a home on that, because then the existing subdivision will not comply with their requirements that allow that density to be there, which means they're not in conformance with their zoning.
And likewise, I understand then too, and thank you for clarifying that, because I understand the connection now too. And I can see where the neighbors, you know, around it are upset as well because of the fact that it's changing the zoning in order for them to be able to create the sale of the property, which allows everything else. I am supportive of the case. I, you know, just want to make sure you'll find me to be very direct. But at the same time, you know, this was not handled correctly, I don't think. I mean, I really find that a problem. I mean, I, like I said, I'm going to be supportive of the case because I understand the problems that are going through over here. But at the same time, Alan, I really, Brennan, in your particular case, I mean, you should have let us know some of these issues. There were other issues that Councilman Noakowski brought up to me. You should have been more direct with us, and me in particular, since it's in my district. But I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Allen. I live at 611 North 21st Place. I live in 2200 East Bethany Home. And I just wanted to share with you, we briefly touched on the trespassing issue with the tennis court. Just wanted to let you know attempts were made by me personally to secure that tennis court. I put up no trespassing signs. I put a lock and a pad, padlock and chain on it. The padlock was cut off. Put a bigger lock on it. That, then the chain was cut off, so I put a bigger chain on it. Ultimately, that went away. And unfortunately, because it's outside of our walled subdivision, we're not driving by, all of us are just not driving by it, you know, frequently to see, observe what's going on there. But I did want to share that we have made attempts in the past to try to secure it and make it safe. But it's been a challenge for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Northup.
My name's Don Northup and my husband and I live at 622 North 21st Place. And I'm technically challenged, so. Oh, there, there you go. Yep. And we live at the house right, just below the, yeah, right there. And we have, we built our home and we've lived there for 15 years, raised our children there, still have a high school daughter. So we, we back up to the unpaved, unlit road that leads to this lot. So, and, and, you know, we're all, we're all neighbors. And if I thought for one minute that a developer was going to come in and change the character of this neighborhood, we would be up here opposing it as well. One home on an acre and a half, a million dollar plus home on an acre and a half lot back there, to me, doesn't change the character of our neighborhood, it only enhances it. I can tell you, most of the neighbors that, that live further south don't go drive down there. We back up to it. So at 11 o'clock at night, at midnight, we are the ones going back there chasing people off, because we back right up to it, their lights are shining into our, but you wouldn't see it if you don't live right there by it. So it is very, very difficult. And as far as the precedent, they were talking about, I don't know how many homeowners associations have common area outside their walls. So it's not really a precedent that you, and again, when they were talking about it, they're talking about a terrible precedent to allow subdivisions to sell their open space to developers. And that's somewhat misleading. He's not a, I mean, a developer as we would all think of a developer. This is going to be one home, single story, and, you know, I think some people who opposed it were led to believe that this was going to be developed into something far greater than what is planned for the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is James Goodnell. I live at 646 North 21st Place. I'm in the 2200 East Bethany Community. I think the point you just heard from Don is really the most critical one here. I know that people on both sides of this issue are good people and we all have the same goal in mind, which is to preserve the character of this neighborhood. It truly is a special place. I feel lucky to live there. I moved into the neighborhood about five and a half years ago with my wife. We now have two children, a five-year-old and a seven-year-old, it's their birthday today. And because of our proximity to the RE35 lot, we're able to see some of the unsavory activity that takes place there that others may not. And I think that's what gives us the unique perspective. I know when I go down and walk to the canal to head to Granada Park, which is in one direction, or the Biltmore Resort in the other, we see firsthand some of the activities that are taking place there. Over the years, we've seen cigarettes, we've seen beer cans, we've seen condoms, there was once a large open hunting knife and we called the police about it. And those are the sorts of things that aren't good for the neighborhood. I think we're just the ones who happen to see it more and have to deal with it more than the others. I'm confident that if you have a single-family home on this very, very large lot, it will enhance the neighborhood for everyone. It will make it a more peaceful neighborhood for everyone. It will make it a safer neighborhood for everyone. So I support the rezoning and, and I would urge you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rohila Holden, and I probably just missed your name pretty bad.
My name's Rohila Holden and I reside at 2141 East Bethany Home Road. I have a pie-shaped acre there. And before I, I'm here to talk about crime and empty vacant land. I grew up right on Broadway and 13th Street, right on Broadway. And when I was young, we never had a key. Today, you'd have to have a 20-foot fence there. So times and things do change. And I can tell you that when I bought 2141 East Bethany, the vacant land is about 15,000 square feet or so. It goes away, can you hear me? And what happened is that literally there was a tent with homeless people living there. And I'm thinking, wow, I thought this was a really nice neighborhood. And I worked with my neighbor because the vacant land is right next to his house and he had had to put cameras to make sure that people weren't peeking over or going over to his property. And I've had several people coming through that part, coming to the back part of my garage. And so, we've had our share of, of trash and parties and beer cans and beer bottles. And also on that tennis court, we go walking to the canal and like the gentleman said, I can verify and my testimony is that you do see lots of broken bottles, condoms, trash and, and you know, times do change in life. And I think that a lot of times, we as residents are hindered through the bureaucracy and the zoning laws and everything that has to be in touch. And I understand the system, we want to make sure we regulate and have a good neighborhoods and loving neighborhoods, but I love my neighborhood, but I kind of had wished that I didn't have that 15,000 square foot because it does create a lot of problems already. Three minutes? Three minutes? Anyway, did I say enough?
Thank you.
No, I just want to reiterate that we all know that crime is not in just certain areas of town. It's all over. I'm a, I'm a testimonial now. I'm 74 years old, and I see it everywhere. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Vincent Keenan?
Good afternoon. My name is Vincent Keenan. I live at 6043 North 21st Place, in the 2200 East Bethany Community. My wife and our three daughters, two of them out of the house now, but we've been there 13 years, love the neighborhood. And I've been on the board for the past seven years as the treasurer, so I can attest to the fact we've paid to clean up all this detritus that you've heard about. There is vagrancy. You know, the issue is, this tennis court lot, in addition to being outside the four walls, it's up against the canal, it's very dark at night, and it's at the end of a dirt road. Access is truly the issue. I can tell you, we were approached by a developer about this lot, and we said, we're not interested, because we don't want a developer. We don't want higher density. We want to keep it what we have today. And that's why when Mr. Williams approached us about buying the lot, he loved the area. He understood he'd have to go through some things to get it shovel-ready. But he wanted to build his own personal, single-family residence, which would conform with the neighborhood and enhance the neighborhood. So that's really what was motivating. We, you know, as you heard, we all love the area, we don't want to change anything. There were things about developers, flyers, none of that is true. We never would have dealt with a developer. We think a single-family home on a one and a half acre lot would actually enhance the area. It would solve the safety and security issue. And most importantly, it conforms. It will be just like all the other beautiful homes in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I just add some comments then, too? I understand the problems that you guys are going through over there. I think some of us up here, and I think with, with some of the neighbors, they didn't like the way this was handled. I don't like a lot of it either. I mean, some of this last-minute stuff that we hear about up here is not something that I find very favorable. And maybe it's the way you were represented, I don't know. Not you as a whole association, but I think some of the individuals on your side knew information, and could have worked with us, could have done things a little bit better. I understand the problem. It's not you, it's not your problem. But at the end of the day, it also comes down to Alan. You, we don't like to solve these kinds of problems. I mean, there's a lot of information that we should have been advised of, that I'm concerned about, that, you know, it wasn't. And the use, and the neighbor's concern is that using zoning to solve a problem is not a good way to use the process. So it's just nothing that we really do. I understand your problem. I got it. You know, I've, I've been supportive, I made the motion of it, right? Going forward, I'm really not happy. Okay? I'm really not, at the way this thing was handled. And I think your guys should have been more upfront with us on some things, and could have been a lot more clear. And I realize you're having a hard time getting your permits and things like that, and I get all that, okay? I just don't like the way this case was handled at all.
Yeah, I.
Thank you.
If I had it to do again, I probably would have gotten more advice about this earlier. I just did not realize. Thank you.
You have a question?
Just had a couple of questions of Alan. I think, looking at these stipulations, I may be wrong, but you were trying to write stipulations to keep the integrity of the neighborhood. I mean, the way I read one, two, and three, and then the addition that Councilwoman De Sisio added to clarify seven, that's to try to preserve the neighborhood intact, noting that there will be one new home, correct? Is that what?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that is correct. So the, the RE 35 zoning district, that if council approves, would be on that site, only allows one home per acre. It would allow for a two-story home, you know, by right, but via stipulation. It is limited to one-story, 25 feet. Trying to keep in, in the context with the neighborhood and what's there, along with those other items that you mentioned.
Which I think is great. It looks like you were trying to preserve as much of the neighborhood as you can, and then speak to the vacant lot as it is. So I, I think those stipulations are a good way to help protect the neighborhood.
Thank you. We do have four cards that do not wish to speak, but please put their name in the record. With that, I will close the public hearing. We do have a motion on the floor to approve. And we have a second. Is there further discussion, comments?
Mayor, just a, just a couple, couple comments on.
Remind us the councilman.
I'll fall for sound then. I represent the Levine area, and we have a lot of open space and a lot of concerns out, out in that area. And especially now with the 202 freeway coming in, the expansion is, of developments going on like crazy out there. So it's really important to have that communication with the community. There were some things that concerned me that I heard, but at the same time, that I was hearing that this is a good solution, that it's going to solve some of those problems out there in the community. But next time, I'd really like to see that there's more of a, a community, what I call Phoenix, a win-win situation, the Phoenix, on Team Phoenix approach. So with that, I'll be supporting it, but I just wanted to make sure of that.
Roll call, please.
De Sisio? Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Leave that 7-0. That is the last item we have. All right, I, I still have a couple cards for citizens' comments. I don't know if they're still here or not. Nathan Helsinger?
I'm actually here with a citizen's petition. And it's not at your police department, but directed to your police department. This petition is submitted in light of the attempted murder of Kim Covington, former news anchor, Channel 12, in September 2013, in the city of Phoenix. This was made to look like an accident, but it wasn't. It was an attempt on her life. I am petitioning this city to direct detectives to reopen this investigation, and to contact me. I do have information that explains how and why Ms. Covington was targeted. I'm asking that Mayor and Council support this petition, and have someone from your police department to contact me. I will further the information that I have, that will prove this was no accident. I would like to submit to the council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bo, I don't know how to say it. S T A S I E E F, S K I. Here, no response. Elizabeth Venival?
I have a citizen petition, and I don't know if I should hand it out before or at the end.
You just, I want to submit it. You can read it, or you can just submit it to us.
Right, yeah. Okay, um, so, my petition is called "Right to Sleep, Right to Survive." And as I said two weeks ago, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals has ruled on September 4th, 2018, in Martin versus City of Boise, that it is cruel and unusual punishment to criminalize sleeping and camping under the Eighth Amendment. However, the city continues to wake up sleeping people, harassing them and making them mood, leading to sleep deprivation and lowered quality of life. Like most homeless people, many have been up on their feet since the break of dawn. It is half a day ordeal to get a shower. It leaves you exhausted. It leads to warrants and charges, which further make it difficult to get out of homelessness's barriers to employment and housing. It is unconstitutional and unjust. There are insufficient shelter beds, and not all shelters are appropriate for everyone. Sitting and sleeping should not be crimes. Most of your homeless police enforcement programs are prefaced on making sure that people who are homeless are not seen. Whereas corporations and homeowners have interests, the interests do not override basic human rights. It is discrimination based on class status. The poorest of the poor suffer. This is cruel and unusual punishment, and enforcement of laws against camping and sleeping need to be ended. Repeal the urban camping laws and end enforcement of trespassing for sleeping, because I find most people are being criminalized for trespass, not for, and it's not on private property, it's on City of Phoenix property. Homeless people are not less human because they're on the streets. The city of Phoenix needs to respect their ruling and behave appropriately. Please respect the courts and the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have? Is there anyone else left? Very none? We're adjourned.